What's it gonna have to do with? Quick passes. Short, quick passes, because they're not gonna have all the time. And one thing the Cowboys did with some success.
You did? Yeah. Yeah, but how about Tim? This is not on.
Maximize their number of sessions. Giants.
I hear it this way.
Hurry up.
There we go.
Hurry up.
God bless America.
Hicker's defense though gets moved on. They only would save them all year was the turnovers. They had a lot of interceptions, a lot of horrible recoveries. Now starting the ball all year together. Beautiful.
No problem. My pleasure. Okay, ladies. I believe we are, uh, okay.
Okay, meeting come to order 7:35 PM. Township Prosecutor Troy Hills, regular Township Council meeting, January 10, 2012. Adequate notice to this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of open public meeting law by filing notice in the office of Township Clerk, posting the meeting notes on the bulletin board municipal building, December 15, 2011, where it has remained open since that date. Legal notice has appeared in both daily records, Star Ledger was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers, local radio stations on December 19, 2011. Note, council meetings are videotaped, aired on cable vision, public access, Channel 21, 2 PM Sundays, and are available for viewing, www.parcipani.net.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrupi?
Here.
Mr. Cesaro?
Here.
Mr. G. Piero?
Here.
Mr. Ferrara?
Here.
Council President Stanton?
Here. Also present Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lynn, Business Administrator, John Englesino, Township Attorney, Mary Solerzo, Temporary Town Clerk. Please rise for a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Would you please remain standing, please?
This morning, we were all saddened to hear sudden passing of Assemblyman Alex Decrosse. Alex was the state's current longest-serving Assemblyman. He was a true friend and leader, not only residents of Parcipani, but all residents of the entire state of New Jersey. Our condolences go out to his family and friends during this difficult time. His passing has caught us all off-guard, and he will truly be missed. At this time, we'd like to honor Assemblyman Decrosse with a moment of silence.
Would any other council members like to make any remarks?
Mr. Ferrara, if you want to go first.
We are all saddened and shocked by the sudden passing of Assemblyman Alex Decrosse. Alex Decrosse worked tireless for the state of New Jersey. He was a great leader, and a great mentor, and a great friend. He will be missed by, of course, his family, who he held dear, also by his political family, and the people of the state of New Jersey, Morris County, and his hometown of Parcipani, Troy Hills. His legacy will remain with us.
I mean, it was a shock to me in the morning. I just want to extend my deepest sympathies to the Decroche family. He's served this state and district and Parcipani honorably for so many years. Mr. Decroche actually became a friend and mentor to me, and, um, rest in peace. God bless you.
I would just like to say that not only was Alex a great representative of the people, but he was also a great person. No matter how busy he was, he would always take the time to talk to you. He always had the time to listen to what you had to say, and he will be sorely missed.
I've been friends with Alex for over 35 years. We've worked together on many projects, supported many projects together. Alex was a dedicated public servant, working from the heart. He always voted and supported for what was best for New Jersey, Morris County, and Parcipani. My condolences to Betty Lou and the Decroche family. Alex will be missed.
Someone else grows was a leader and a friend and will be greatly missed. My heart goes out to his wife, Betty Lou Decrosse, and to the Decrosse family. Every three, four months, I would have breakfast with Alex Decrosse, and we'd talk shop, and truly gonna miss those moments with Alex. Someone Decrosse treated the residents, constituents, colleagues with honesty and respect, and he was always accessible. He was a great leader because of his passion to help others. I read this quote this morning, and in closing, "Every passing day is one that is gone forever. Make sure it is one in which you have done something for others." That's how I would define someone else to cross, always doing for others. God rest someone else to cross his soul. God bless.
Amen. Upcoming meetings. 2/7/12 at 7:30 PM, agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. 2/14/12, 7:30 PM, regular meeting, public invited, public participation. Mayor's presentations.
We'll start with...
Want me to read the first one?
Sorry, what? Friends of Lake Hiwatha.
Friends of Lake Hiwatha present a check to Public Assistance Trust Fund for Victims of Hurricane.
Well, first, I would like to thank the Friends of Lake Hiwatha for your contribution to the Parcipani Public Trust Fund on behalf of the victims of Hurricane Irene. It is truly, truly appreciated. I'm gonna tell you a little story about the Friends of Lake Hiwatha. I received a phone call from this lady, Antoinette. A little fiery little lady, I can tell you that. And she was upset that we didn't have any holiday decorations in Lake Hiwatha. So, I got a little snide back, said, "Form a committee." And you know what? That's exactly what she did. She formed a committee of the residents, several residents, one's my wife, Brenda, and some of the merchants as well. And they, as you see when you go to Lake Hiwatha, you see all the holiday decorations, and they're gonna continue to do it. On behalf of Parcipani Troy Hills, myself as the mayor and the council, I'd like to thank you very much for your generous gift.
We are presenting $300 that we... We are presenting $300 to the Parcipani Public Trust Fund. The proceeds are to go to the residents of Lake Hiwatha who suffered flood damaging from Hurricane Irene.
Thank you. I can kiss this one. The last presentation, the last time I did, I was here, I gave out certificates of volunteers for helping out during the Hurricane Irene disaster, and there were several of those fires that I couldn't attend, and they're here tonight. Excuse me, I'd like to call them up. The Township of Parcipani Troy Hills Outstanding Achievement Award presented to Mount Tabor Fire District 1 in recognition of your outstanding efforts and support assisting the victims of Hurricane Irene for your unwavering commitment to the community. I truly appreciate District 1 Fire, I've always been a friend, and they scared me during a haunted house, so I don't know scare that easy. Oops, sorry about that. Township of Parcipani Troy Hills Outstanding Achievement Award presented to Rainbow Lakes Fire District 2. Thank you, and thank you for all your service to the township. Township of Parcipani Troy Hills Outstanding Achievement Award, Parcipani Troy Hills Fire Association District 6. Madre, thank you. The Township of Parcipani Troy Hills has a racist group that operates under the Office of Emergency Management, consisting of 12 licensed amateur radio operators who volunteer their time and skill to set up organized non-commercial communication networks via ham radio, equipped at a radio room at the EOC, which is the Emergency Operations Center, which a lot of us spent a lot of time that night and that weekend at. I present this, and what RACI stands for is Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service. And I found out this morning that during the crisis, that your services were definitely needed, because we lost power, and without your assistance, I spoke to Barbara Iavola this morning, thank you so much for what you're doing. I'm gonna read Township of Parcipani Troy Hills Outstanding Achievement Award presented to RACI, RACI's, excuse me, in the recognition of your outstanding efforts and support assisting the victims of Hurricane Irene for your unwavering commitment to the community. Thank you so much. Thank you. Like always, thank you. And thank you very much, all the volunteers, and thank you, Friends of Lake Hiwatha.
Okay, bids to be taken, none. Ordinances, second readings, public hearing, none. Consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Township Council will be approved by one motion. They'll be... Oh, okay. Now open this to the public, public hearing, you'll have five minutes.
Fellow residents also. Roy Masmer, Drummond Drive. Here tonight on one topic only, Brian. I know the mayor last week chuckled a little bit when we brought it up, because that's all we've done too in Glacier Hills and Sedgfield, we've chuckled. Today, I spent about an hour and a half at the engineer's office, and Jasmine, I requested, and she brought it in tonight, if you could just hold it up, the specs on that project? It's not that easy to read. What I'm talking about, I brought it up last week, but here are some pictures that one of our neighbors took. Those pictures don't even give a justice, the negative justice of what was done. But before I even get to that project that was done, started about a month ago...
Mr. Masmer, for the crowd, what street?
Drummond Drive and Tarn Drive in Glacier Hills. I don't have enough time, we only get five minutes, but you have to come out and see it, starting right from the point of where the sidewalks are originally, and then this gives you an idea of the work that was done. But before I even get further onto that, those pictures will tell the story. In fact, if you could pass them around, Jasmine, give them to Pat, so the residents can see them. I want to bring up some other stuff that happened in Glacier Hills the last six months. There's been a lot of communication, about four or five months ago, and they did a nice job with the street, with the top coat and the paving on Moraine, from the start of the fork at Tarn and Moraine down to Drummond Drive. The job was good, but we were not notified that this work was gonna be done. It caused a real hardship for a lot of people, especially for one of the residents on Moraine that's doing a rather large addition to his house. We were not told this was gonna happen. The paving, like I said, was about four tenths of a mile, crossed streets of Forum, Spencer, and Drummond. We're totally affected by this work. To give you an idea of how I believe in communication, JCP&amp;L sent out one of those subcontractors right after the hurricane, and they cut down a number of our branches, trees that were hanging over the wires. They notified us, ladies and gentlemen. They came to each one of our doors, if you weren't home, they left a note on the door, "Please take your cars off the street, we will be causing a slight inconvenience, give yourself additional time." They did a super job, I even called the corporate office to thank them. Back to Moraine on the paving. Mayor, I know this was not, was brought up to you last week, but you should see the concrete curbing that ends approximately at Forum, and then they put the asphalt curbing further down, about two tenths of a mile. I know, and I'm not trying to make a joke here, nobody's gonna leave their house unless they're drunk with one white shoe and one black shoe, whether it's a business meeting or just going to school. Well, maybe school they will nowadays, but... So, there's not consistent with the curbing. It looks horrible, very, very bad. Two weeks before the holiday, I'm coming home at 4:30, I see all these trucks pulling. I call up the engineering department a few minutes before they close. I said, "You're not paving the street tomorrow, are you, Drummond? I mean, it does need it, but you're not gonna do it in the middle of December." They said, "No, we're redoing your sidewalks." So, I just shrugged my shoulders, you know, I said, "All right." Well, the next day, this is what we got, the next couple of days. And we really do, I really would appreciate it if the five of you would come, and the Business Administrator would come out and look at this project, because those pictures don't give it, like I said, negative justice. This project is impossible to describe what they did. So, Mayor, you said last week you'd have some answers for us. Well, there's about 10 residents. Yeah, I'm almost done, right? How much time do I have left?
One minute.
Okay. You've been contacted by one of the fine residents in our neighborhood, I'm not gonna use her last name, Sharon, other people, I think they're here tonight, there's about a dozen, 10 or 12 residents here in our neighborhood. I'm also speaking for one of the residents, they're afraid the same thing's gonna be done on Spencer, would like to have that stopped. And I'm done right now on that. I mean, I've got emails here, I've got, you know, I've got 10 seconds left there, Vinny, right?
Thirty.
Thirty seconds, thank you. These are the specs, this is the charge. I can't figure it out, quite honestly, because it's all the curbing, sidewalk work done throughout the town. It was one bid contract, that book is 200 pages. It was impossible, and even George Winters today couldn't break out what the cost was. Also, Mayor, what I'd like, I don't know if you're prepared to describe this tonight, what is our responsibility as residents when you have sidewalks besides shoveling it? You might not be able to answer that, because I didn't prepare you for that, and I'm not asking...
Finish your sentence, Roy.
Okay, that's it? Yeah. But if you could tell us what you said last week? Yeah, I spoke to Justin Lee, and he was gonna be here tonight, but he had to be, I guess it was at the hospital, one of his family members took ill, and he was going to explain it. But in regards to responsibility, there's owner, tenant, occupant, and operator for exterior premises, which is subsection 213-19, that when you have sidewalks at the homeowners, and if I'm incorrect, Jasmine, let me know, the homeowners are responsible to repair, as you know, and fix the sidewalks as well, which I did go down there, and I was disappointed in what I saw as well, and that is why I'm still, you know, I wish he could have been here tonight, but I wasn't gonna force him to come here if he had an illness in the family. But, that being said, I'm still working it out with Justin to see if there's anything the township further can do, because, you know, there was a community development block grant that was used, from what he told me, and I gotta see what, how that community development block grant works for those, for the sidewalks. We've done several sidewalks this year with the CDBG. And once I get those answers, I can, I guess, either report them to you, or I can call up each resident, because I did speak to a few residents, I spoke to them on by phone, via phone, and I have their numbers, and I told them, once I get answers, I would call them up. All right. That's good. That'd be better, so I have one person to report to. Thank you, Roy.
Roy, if I could just add to that, I did go down there and look at that, and it's pretty bad. It's bad. So, Mayor, if we can do something about that, because it's not a good job at all.
Jasmine, just a quick question, is this an ongoing project?
No. I don't think it is an ongoing project, that's why...
It was part of our general annual sidewalk program, where we repair damage to sidewalks as a result of our street trees.
Okay. But are we going back in to check it out, or look at it, or whatnot?
Well, I'm gonna have them go...
We need to do something.
All right. No, Jasmine, just do me a favor, of course, we, at our leisure, wanna go look at it, but usually, as a council, I'm sure the public would be interested in this, when we wanna keep track on something, especially when it's infrastructure-related, can you keep it on the agenda, on the engineering report? So, we can check on it, week to week?
Sure.
So, at least the members of Glacier Hills, the residents of Glacier Hills, so every two weeks, or four weeks, when we have our agenda meeting, you'll see, it'll be called whatever the administration wants to call it, Glacier Hills, curbing issue, no change, or if there are changes, the engineer will let us... So, at least it's on our radar, that's what we do when we're interested in something, we keep it on our radar, so we'll make it part of our engineer's report.
Just one quick question, the people responsible for doing the job, are they gonna be bouncing around doing more jobs during the year?
Well, I'll check with Justin on that.
I don't know if they... I don't know if they finished up this project already, because, you know, we bid it out every year.
Okay. Thank you. Sir? Mr. Bushkey, why don't you do this, this lady's gonna speak, and then soon she's done, yeah?
Do you want to do all the people on that first?
Whatever you like.
It makes more... Nope?
Whatever you like.
Because I'm putting another thing on your radar.
Happy New Year, Mr. Bushkey.
My name is Ed Bushkey, I'm the owner of the property that you see in these pictures. I'd like to say that the contractor who did the work did a fine job, it's excellent. The young... The problem is that it looks stupid, because of what he was told to do. They went over and they took a sidewalk that starts on Moraine, it runs for approximately 160, 170 feet, and then stops at the first house on Drummond's driveway. Then it is not done for, there's 260 feet of no curb. And then there's a curb that runs for the 100-foot width of my neighbor's property, and then it runs for about 35 feet on my property and stops, and then it goes around on town-owned, the rest of my property is no sidewalk, and then it runs down the town-owned property on the right of way to the school path. Now, the school path is an obstacle course. There's holes and everything else, but that's a different organization. That should have been fixed first, if you're interested in safety or anything else. Approximately two months ago, little white lines appeared on my sidewalk with arrows pointing in different directions. What that eventually meant, because I couldn't figure it out, and I couldn't get anybody to tell me what it was, they came in with a saw, and they cut there, and they cut there, and they took this piece out, and left the cracked sections here, because there was no sign telling them to do anything. And they did not fix that. And if you notice the pictures carefully, you can see those cracks, the sidewalk is in terrible shape. On Tarn, it's even worse. I mean, it's all overgrown, so now you've got this nice paved place about that wide, and then it cuts down to something like that, which is in horrible shape, but there was no signs telling them what to do, so that's it. I mean, it was a total, whoever gave the instructions for that should be considered... Well, I don't even know what to call it. Yeah, Greystone would be a fine place. I'm sure you would find somebody there who would do the same thing. No, it was bad, bad news.
When they did my area, an employee from the engineering department went around and evaluated where the sidewalks were damaged from tree roots. That is the only area that the township is responsible for by somebody's definition.
Okay.
So, what those lines were, was saying, "This part of the sidewalk was damaged by tree roots, therefore, the township will repair that." And that's the only areas they will repair, is those areas that were damaged by tree roots.
Yeah, but the sidewalk is a non-functioning thing here anyway. I mean, nobody ever uses it.
Well, that's beside the point. All over town, the entire project, ongoing year to year, okay, the entire town is, they will repair the sidewalks where tree roots, the township tree roots, have damaged the sidewalk, and that's all. Now, I have seen, I have seen neighbors who run out and negotiate with the contractor to pay the contractor to continue, you know, the rest of their sidewalk, it could be 10 feet, 20 feet, 30 feet, whatever, but some of them have gotten out there and gotten the contractors to do it at their expense. It's cheaper than, while the contractor's there with the blacktop and the workers, you know, they can give you a better deal than if they have to come back later with the equipment and trucks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bushkey. Good night.
Hi, I'm Julie Peterson, 25 Old Parcipani Road, I'm here representing the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, and I passed copies of the statement out to you, but I think I'll read it, if that's all right, if you have time, okay. The purpose of the Open Space Trust Fund is to acquire land to preserve open space and improve and renovate publicly owned spaces, parks, and historic properties, with a portion of the fund to be expended on capital improvements on open spaces and parks, and the preservation of historic properties. In 2006, members of our committee and the Historic Society worked really hard to ensure the inclusion of that clause that allocated for historic preservation, two hundredths of each dollar collected for the trust fund. The historic preservation portion of the fund has allowed the township to purchase the Smith Baldwin House on South Beverick Road, a property that's eligible for New Jersey State and National Registers of Historic Places, and it preserves an important segment of the town's early history. The Smith Baldwin House is one of 10 historic structures that are currently town-owned. The others include the Bowlsby to Geliki House on Baldwin Road, and eight structures at the Stickley Museum Craftsman Farms, National Historic Site. Additionally, the town leases the Littleton Schoolhouse. At some point in the future, maybe, the Forge Pond property and dam will become the responsibility of the town. Hopefully, a town park can be developed there with passive recreational uses. The greater proportion of Parcipani's oldest historic structures, which are in private hands, do not receive government support, and are reliant on the owner's ability to maintain the historic integrity of the structure. The Condit House is preserved by the Hunting Ridge Condominiums Association, and the Grange Building is preserved by the Chinese Church. At Glaxo Smith Kline, right now is undertaking an extensive and very good-looking rehabilitation of the Valentine Barn on Littleton Road. Those are all private enterprises. One of the most important facets of historic preservation is maintenance. Historic buildings require almost constant attention, and some maintenance is time-consuming and detailed. Specialized craftsmen may be needed. Procedures and materials are often different than those used in regular buildings. So, I'm concerned with councils and Board of Education's consideration of spending open space funds for artificial turf fields. I understand the pros of building artificial turf fields, although there are significant environmental and health concerns that must be addressed. However, I do not believe that school fields should be paid for with monies collected for a different purpose, nor do I believe the town should control the use of high school fields. Parcipani Troy Hills will become a city. In the future, we will regret the lack of open space and the condition of our historic resources if we hastily commit monies earmarked for these purposes to artificial turf with a life of eight to 10 years. Athletic fields are not open, they're not open space. The field should be funded some other way, if they're considered necessary. Thank you for your time.